For joining us today for our monthly strategic planning committee meeting. We continue to be working in a virtual environment, so we ask for your patience as we are transitioning between slides and conversation. So we will jump right in to our conversation today, and I'm going to throw it over to Ira Mabel.
Hello. Good morning, everybody. So today we are continuing our conversation about racial equity and land use. Just to give you a little bit of a preview, there was an item referred to the committee a couple of weeks ago from the planning commission about market rate production. And how that affects affordability. So we're hopefully have some speakers for you next month on that. And then some other requests from us about providing some city data like permits and other things that are that are purely local data. And I'm, I'm working on looking into how much of that we can provide. Or probably may to have some products to show you. But in the meantime, you know, in the past couple of meetings, we have. It's the through the course of discussing this issue, talked a lot about about data. And data you'd like to see and data that's available and pros and cons and what's around. And then there was a follow up last time from a from a member of the public asking for more information. So I thought it would be useful while we're working on that other stuff. To spend a little bit more time. Showing some, some things that we may have mentioned really briefly before. And and really maybe giving some, some tools that you can use to to answer some of these questions that you're interested in. Regardless of whether or not, you know, there's a winds up being a package from, from the city or the planning department. To show it all, you know, it is out there and there are, there are definitely easier ways to look at it and harder ways to look at it. So also in in the backup today is memo that describes a little bit more detail of the data sources. That I'm going to be going to today. So partially, this is also kind of a, a reference point in time. Should you always should go back and actually find all the things and you don't have to scramble and, and try and email someone and remember what we said. And then also in the backup is, we have mentioned previously, a report that the city published in the seventies of Raleigh neighborhoods. That we updated some years ago now to compare it to 2010 data. So there is a kind of a memo. Going over some of the differences between those two documents. And the difference between 2010 census data and data from the seventies. So we had mentioned that a couple of times, so I thought I'd throw that in there too. Should you be interested? But now I will get. Right to. The content for today. Excuse me. So again, you know, this PowerPoint should be in the backup with all the, the links. There's, um, I first want to go through. The, the different ways and formats and flavors of census data that that's out there. I think, you know, we're pretty lucky in the US to have the, the rich census data that we do. A lot of countries in the world don't have that. And. Ultimately, a lot of analytical tools out there all filter back to. Somewhere in the census. And we can get, go into really deep discussion about, you know, the technical, how the census works and the different nuances of the data, which I'm not going to talk about. But I wanted to go over a couple, or particularly this morning, ways to look at census data. From hard to use to hopefully easier to use. So the first is just the census itself. So the, the census does not provide raw data. In a really usable way, it does, but that's pretty complicated to use and it's on a weird geography and that's to protect privacy. So the Census Department itself, when you fill out the census. Has a. Has a record of. You know, that survey, every piece of information on that survey. And there's a lot of other departments in the government that use special tabulations, they're called. So the census will produce a special version of its raw data. For, you know, the Bureau of Labor Statistics or somebody else who's interested in some particular question. But. The, the data that's public is aggregated to some degree to prove. To maintain anonymity. So the, the smallest level of geography that. Basically, almost everything is available at is the census tract, which still can be pretty big. Some stuff smaller at the block group or block level. But it's pretty sporadic, not every data points available at every geography. But anyway, the, they have a, a website, data.census.gov. Back before I started working with the city, the, the tool that the, that you used to access census data was called American Community Survey. And I was a, I would say a, a very expert user at that tool. Since, since they switched to this one, I, I must admit, I am pretty clumsy in this, in this website. Probably Carmen is more experienced with me using this. But it can be pretty frustrating to figure out what you're doing and how to search and narrow down your selection. Sometimes you just, there's nothing you can do but download a. You know, Excel, a spreadsheet of. Every census tract in the state of North Carolina or something. It can be kind of frustrating. The Census Department does and has for a while provided mapping tools. In my experience, they're all not great. And are can be even more frustrating than the tables themselves. So sometimes it's, it's pretty simple. So if you're looking for just like a breakdown for the city of Raleigh, it's not too hard to search for Raleigh and click on a thing that pops up. But. For most laypeople going directly to the census. You know, can be pretty confusing and has kind of a steep learning curve, in my opinion. But that's where everything comes from. Should you want to invest the time to actually find the. The original source. The, the census does not provide great historical records. So, I mean, you can see on the left there, all the tables that you could click on. This is a screenshot, but you know, going back to 2010. They don't, they don't really provide access to old, old census very far back. And I imagine, you know, as we continue, some of those intermediate years between the 2010 and 2020 census, the big decennial census will probably drop off too. And that I think is just a like cost. Can't host. Everything, you know, data is, is money. For, for historical, so if you are, there have been a lot of questions about looking at Raleigh over time and looking at how we got where we are. And how the city has changed since its founding. And when I was, was doing a lot of this demographic analysis work and wanted to find, you know, even going back to like the fifties or something. There's a project run by the University of Minnesota called IPUMS. There's actually, so this is the NHGIS is the. National Historic GIs, I think acronym. There's like a dozen of them. They have different census and other data from around the world. But this one in particular, you know, you can see on this chart goes back to the census from 1790. So the further back you go, obviously, the less data there is. Just because it's all transcribed from paper and the census has evolved over time and asked different questions and the categories have changed. So it can sometimes be, you can't really make one to one comparisons, but for a lot of basic just populations, you know, what racial information they did collect. This is by far the most convenient way to do that. You do have to, it's not too hard to also it's search what you're looking for. And find different geographies. It does take some time. You like put it in a request from them and wait. Half an hour, an hour and they email it back to you. It does come out as a table, but if you're looking for like city of Raleigh, basic or Wake County or something. And wanted to go back in history. This, this is the tool I would use as a professional. You know, to make maps and charts and stuff, well, charts mostly. But historical stuff, so it's pretty great. And it's from the university, so. They do a great job. This is a, an example of, and these are, these are out there. Around the internet and in the industry, an example of. Kind of a mix between. You know, a. Social science project and a, and an art project. But people do use census data. Creatively to tell visual stories. This is a racial dot map. Which you probably have seen, I think, popularized, you know, shortly after the 2010 census by someone from. University of Chicago. And I was in planning school in, in 2010, 2012, and I remember the like racial dot map of Chicago was, you know, in the news and everywhere. And sort of a really stark view of. The segregation in the city of Chicago. And I went to planning school in Illinois, so we were, you know. Became a pretty popular visual interpretation of the census. This is the picture of Raleigh from the 2010 data. I think Carmen is working on a map. For us to use. That we can get a little bit more specific, but. You know, these, there are some of these out there. This is probably the most famous one to door. Well-known example of just a single. Point of census data, but this one is maintained from the, the University of Virginia. So it's pretty cool. You can scan all around the country, I think, pretty clear from this map, you know. Where the blue dots are and where the green dots are mostly. But just an example of, of a helpful, I think, and just. Beautiful use of raw data. And then finally. This is a tool, a company. Called. Policy Map. I do, I'm going to switch to sharing something else. I do sort of. Am a bit cautious of. Sort of pushing a private company. In general, the things I've shown you so far are either the government or universities, but this policy map is a. Spinoff of reinvestment fund headquartered in Philadelphia, which does pretty good work. So, you know. I don't want to make this seem like the city of Raleigh is endorsing that, endorsing the private company, but they do have a free tool. There is a subscription based version. So some of the, some of the, I don't think you can download the data and they do have some proprietary data. But this is way better than the, the census's own mapping tool. And reinvestment fund, in my opinion, is a pretty good, pretty, pretty good group of folks. So. I think probably for the purposes of, of commissioners and just the general public. Wanting to poke around and the city and look at, at census data and not have to download a, a table from the census and make their own map. This is pretty great. So I do want to show. I'll make a note here. I'm in the legacy version. They have a newer version, which. Give me a pop up. That's a login every time I clicked on something. So I don't know. It was a big glitchy, but this is the, the old version that I'm used to using. And you can see, you know, just some basic. Household families, if I go to race. There's sort of what you would get raw from the census, so the different racial groups. They do some, some math or. Work on census tables and re-tabulating data. So this is just the non-white. Population Raleigh. If you have a subscription, you can change the color and change the, the breakpoints of the different buckets, but the free version does that automatically for you. So, you know, this is stuck at 10.24% into some. Automatic categorizing, but for, for quickly looking around. Think nothing's faster. It does have some old, so it says 2014 American Community Survey data. And you can often change the. The geography that you're looking at. But this is just people of color or non-white persons. They, they do get pretty cool. Other interesting ways to look at data. So I've used this map before. In the past, to do some analysis. It's just, um, you know, you can see the predominant, so if every, this is census tracks where. One particular racial group is above 50%, and then it's the color intensity changes. You can see like the greens are black, less than 50, up to greater than 90. And so this is, this is a little bit of analysis that you won't get directly from the census that they have. That can be pretty convenient. They, they do have, the other thing about this tool is they pull. Data from other sources, not just the census. So. You know, for quality of life, there's all sorts of things, violent crime, property crime. Public transit, some of the stuff. You know, they, from national data sets, so sometimes local data sets are more detailed. But sometimes all you have is the national data set. I want to do. Look at from the USDA. Food access, for example, I know. Commissioner Winters has mentioned this a couple of times in the past about food deserts. So this is just a, a quick map that they have. For low access and not low access. So this looks to me like most of the city of Raleigh is low access, kind of confusing, because I wouldn't think. In my personal opinion, having lived here for three years, more grocery stores in the city of, in the city of Raleigh than anywhere else I've ever lived. So I do want to say for these other. Other sources, the. One really useful feature of this is their data dictionary. So they do have really great documentation for every data point. So if you, you know, poke around in the map and find, you know, mortgage data or lending data and are curious about it. They do, they do tell you, well, first of all, this is like a summary table of all of the, of all of the things you can look at and it just shows what years they have and. And what geography they're available. And then they do describe the, the data source itself. So that food atlas is from the USDA. You know, it's at the county level, right? So that's. An answer of why that was confusing to me. The city of, by the city of Raleigh. Looked all the same color. And there's, I'm, well, directly to the original. So if you wanted to go learn more about the food outlets from the USDA. You can go, you can go right to that source. So a lot of times this is a great research tool. To then go look at raw data somewhere else or read a report or something. So one of the reasons I, I, I like it a lot is if you, if you are just interested in. You know, median rent for all the units in the city of Raleigh. It is like 10 seconds to make that map. And then if there is a more complicated question or a more detailed data set, you can follow the breadcrumbs to go. To go back and find it. Let me go back to my. Okay, um. Next, I want to talk about stuff that's not just raw census data, but a couple of organizations that use data to do some statistical analysis. So the first, I don't think we've ever talked about them in a, in a meeting like this. But the first is the National Low Income Housing Coalition. They're an advocacy group that does a lot of work, but in particular, they, they publish two research reports. And have an interactive website version. Where you can investigate, you know. That years or the most recent version of that and compare geographies in different counties in the state, that kind of thing, or cities in the state. This is a picture from one called the, the gap, which is a relatively sophisticated analysis of. Housing affordability. So it, it goes beyond just the, what is the rent times 30%. It does use raw census data that is available at very weird geographies. So you can't do this analysis really for anything smaller than a city. So it won't tell you like neighborhood by neighborhood. But it does look at like individual census responses for people who live in households and compares what that person earns and what they, what they pay in housing costs, either rent or earn. Rent or own. I think for the most part, they, they focus on rents because ownership is more complicated. But, um. This is like the gold standard of affordability analysis. Because it uses. The, the raw data, the, what's called the public use micro sample. So it's like a data set of individual census responses. And it is, you know, kind of hard to do. I've recreated this methodology. It's pretty involved. It's. You can adjust it for. Utility costs and all sorts of stuff because you do have the raw data. So their reports are pretty great. There's another one where they compare. The sort of median wages versus housing costs, a little bit more of a blunt tool, just looking at like what people earn per hour and what housing costs are. But a super great reference to go look at their reports and they do have state level data and county level data for a lot of the stuff. And you can compare like Raleigh to Charlotte and that kind of. This is walk score again. You know, a private company. But we reference it in the staff reports. So, you know, I do kind of want to spend some time on it and I know. Committee members and commissioners have talked about walkability before. Their methodology is a bit of a black box. They say they use. Uh, let me see, census and. I put it in the, in the memo. Data sources include Google, Great Schools, Open Street Map, Census, other stuff. Places added by the Walk Score community, so individual users can add, you know, places to get a coffee or whatever by food. So, you know. Always have some caution for data that is proprietary and unexplained how they, how they come up with their answer. But this is really the, the only source for this type of analysis, why it's in the staff report. So this gives you three scores about walkability, transit and bike score. I would say, you know, for transit. When I do a staff report, I look at this and then do some fact checking. From Go Raleigh to look at where actual lines are to make sure it makes sense because, you know, in the city, we have like perfect, perfect data of where all the buses go. So when it's available, I do like to double check to make sure it's, it's not, you know, funky or. It does, it does chive with what I know to be true in terms of the bus, bus service. But we use this tool in the staff report, so I wanted to explain it. Finally, and this isn't in the memo, there's. I think Ken, Ken had mentioned at one point, this gentrification comparison tool. Which uses three, three definitions of gentrification. I'm not a super, super big fan of this tool. If you look at the, the description of the. Of the data down at the bottom. It is, it is pretty rudimentary. One or two variables to try to explain what I think is a relatively complex phenomenon like gentrification. So like the middle one is. Just the ratio of household income. From now to the start of the decade. So it's really just looking at how income has changed. You know, which is just a small, small. Indicator of, of gentrification. So they are pretty basic, but I think we've mentioned this in the past, and I wanted to at least. Provide a link somewhere and, and show it to you. But not my favorite, I think. The. More sophisticated tools that try to measure this have a lot more thought into the, the metrics they use. And you can see just on this picture, these three maps are very different from each other. So just between like these three researchers. You know, when you're using such a simplistic model. I don't like to rely on them overly much. Also, those are a couple of, of data sources that do some level of analysis on the raw data. I do want to go through some of the, the local data, the city and the county level. So the, the first is, this is a document published by, or commissioned by the Housing and Neighborhoods Department. It's a requirement from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. I'm going to go to this PDF now. So this is the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. It's required by anyone who receives federal funding from, from HUD. This one is a collaboration for five jurisdictions, so city, town of Cary, the, the county and the two housing authorities. Mostly just for more efficient use. They do pay for this out of their program grant often, so. And they're all required to do it, so it's cheaper to do it regionally and you get, you know. You know, done at once and all in one place. I would like to point out that, that fair housing is not exactly the same as affordable housing. So this is looking at discrimination for their protected classes, which is, you know, includes race, family status, which is whether you have kids or not. You know, uh, country of origin. Persons with disabilities. So you can be discriminated against for using a wheelchair, for example, but not be low income. And that, that is what fair housing is, is discrimination for those. Categories, but there is a, a very strong overlap. Usually the members of the protected classes also tend to be lower income. So the correlation between fair housing and affordable housing is pretty high. So this report does a lot of demographic analysis that is super useful. I want to jump to. You know, there is some more generic. Demographic analysis, and again, this is at the county level, so not as useful for. Every neighborhood in Raleigh, because it is. You know, the, the scale includes everything from Sebelon to Cary. So very different income groups and other stuff. But one of the, one of the requirements of this report by HUD is to look at racially and ethnically concentrated areas of poverty. Most of the time people combine that, so technically ethnically concentrated areas of poverty is just Hispanic versus non-Hispanic. But. A lot of times it's combined, so it's non-white, non-Hispanic, and then all other people into one analysis. But this is looking at places in the county. With high concentrations of non-white. Or Hispanic and high concentrations of poverty. Again, it is. It is scaled to the county, but all of the R caps in the county are in the city. So this is a zoom in of, of the R caps from 2020. A couple in the NC State. This analysis for the most part ignores those, assuming that that's a lot of students who are. You know, the student population is both diverse and low income. So generally, the, the firm that wrote this analysis doesn't spend too much time analyzing, you know, the NC State tracks, but you can see the other tracks and. Inside the Belt Line, Southeast Raleigh and South Raleigh. This same firm did the analysis five years ago, so you have to update this every five years. So there has been some change. So you can go back to the other report and look at the tracks. This is a. A map that shows where the, where the R caps used to be and where they are now. So generally the same type of area, but you know, the city has changed even in the five years that we're, we're looking at, at this data. This analysis uses the R caps overlaid on top of other demographics quite a bit, the sort of, as a comparison. To look at, you know, where housing problems are versus R caps. You can at least draw a little bit of a conclusion, not a super strong conclusion, but a little bit of inclusion of where those issues are related. This is a pretty good analysis of, I'm going to jump to a map, sorry for the scrolling, of housing tenure to, that's. You know, scaled to the, to the county, so you can get this type of thing in policy maps, but. You know, scaled to the, to the county, so you can get this type of thing in policy maps, but um. You know, there are other documents that do the analysis just for, for local data. Uh, so I know we have talked a lot about um. About housing tenure or owners versus renters. Though at least from 2017 data. Which was the most recent available when they started this report. Um, you know, a couple of maps of. Of owner occupancy. For the county overall. And so the inverse is also true. That the darker colors being the, the highest percent owner occupied would be the lowest percent renter occupied. There's a, there's a lot of other stuff in here about the housing market. The move, it's a little bit more esoteric. And so not as useful. I do want to jump to. Another part that is. Not required, but was included. In an Obama era revamp of this document that was repealed. Uh, under President Trump, so, but. A model called Communities of Opportunity, which is based on research from, um, UC University. But this is, this is unlike the. The gentrification tool, which I showed, uh, a much more like involved. Sort of index, um, so it goes through. Five, I think, different indices. So it's looking at prosperity. Um, this is described in the report. Which is. Families in poverty, it looks at job access. Community health, trans access and labor market engagement. Um, and then at the end, and it scrolled through really fast. Um, combines all those things. Into a score. Called Communities of Opportunity. So theoretically, or the idea is that these, these areas that are dark. Have more. More opportunities in neighborhoods, better performing schools, better access to jobs, that kind of thing. Than other areas, and this is indexed to the county. But is better than sort of a national scale. HUD provides a map. That's a national scale, which can be. You know, you're comparing every part of the country to every other part, so not necessarily useful. Um, but the idea behind this type of analysis was. You know, when you're investing your, your federal dollars. Um, there should be a balance between. Supporting neighborhoods. Where the population needs the investment. Um, so neighborhoods of low income in the RCAPs. But. Investing money only in those areas, just it's furthering segregation, so looking for projects. In areas of higher opportunity. To sort of spread out affordable housing options and give people more choices. The, the full title of this document is Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice. Um, so over time, you know, the, the rules of how to do this have, have. Started to think more about, about choice. And what the. The local government who's investing for federal dollars is doing to, to help or hinder that. So again, uh. I think more reliable map, there's just more stuff. More data points, um, that affect. You know, where people live that are aggregated together. Um, but. I'm not surprising, I don't think, to most of us, looking at where higher opportunity is compared to the lower opportunity areas in the county. Um, so there are, you know. Other reports. From the city and housing in neighborhoods. That are super useful that we're already generating. That I think are enlightening, can be enlightening when you're starting to, when you're. Wanting to think about, you know, land use decisions. And comparing where those in the city versus other factors like this. So that's that. Um, the Planning and Development Department. Does a. Data book every year that we update, which is demographics for the city. It's got all sorts of stuff. There's economic data. It's not all land use. It's not all demographics. Carmen, who's our host for today, and JP also in our group, are the ones who update this every year. So. Do you want to point out that we do publish this? A lot of it is aggregated for this. So this is population by age group just for the city. Um, not everything is, is a map. Or a lot of things are map. But just a baseline every year. For some. Uh, demographic trends over time and some projections too. We do publish this book as a companion to the Com Plan. Um, and is available on the city website. And Carmen JP had put a lot of time into it, so thank you to them. Um, the city. Uh, a couple, five or eight years ago, I think when, when Ruffin Hall became city manager. Um, adopted a strategic plan, so this is public too. There are. If you scroll through, there's an interactive website that you can look through. There are a couple of data nuggets spread throughout. This website, like the, that departments report on as part of the support for the strategic plan. So like a life expectancy by neighborhood and that type of thing are updated pretty regularly. Um, it is, you know, not. Comprehensive look at data by any means. Or a source of data by any means, but there are some. Some nuggets of local data in there that I don't think are, are really conveniently available anywhere else. And a couple maps. Uh, and some videos explaining the strategic plan. So this, this version was recently adopted by the. By council a month or two ago, um, earlier this year. So a few things in here that I think are, are interesting. If you have a particular. Question about that, that data, I think there might be some crime data that's, that's from, directly from the police department. That type of stuff. And. Finally, I think this is from. Wake County, uh, so they have, they have a tool that they use for their, their own programming. Called Community Vulnerability. And you can see on the right there, um, it is from census data, but it's, um, persons full of poverty, unemployment. Young people and elderly vacant housing. Um, so this is their attempt to help guide a lot of their programmatic investments. Um, if you go to the, the website that I linked in the backup material, there are a couple other maps that are similar. That goes to the food access plan. That's a county plan from 2017, I want to say. Um, so more information about. About food access. It doesn't have a, a lot of great data. It is more like this is the. It is a long-range plan, so ways to improve food access in the county. But I think there might be a couple maps in there. About food access. The best, I think, local source of, of. Of that type of information. That's looking at just the county. Um, but the, the county is a funnel for. A lot of federal money. So they have this tool and a, and a couple of those on that website that they use. To make decisions about. Their federal money and, and other programs that they invested. So again, when you start to sort of stack all of these things on top of each other. Is much easier to draw. Our conclusions when things, things are corroborating, different sources are corroborating each other. Um, and it's a pretty easy map. It's just a mapping tool. So. Easy to scroll around. Um, finally, I do, you know, this. Conversation has been. Okay, there's a lot on what, how the planning commission. Should be thinking about decisions that they make. Um, last week at, at Community of the Whole, we presented. Uh, proposed update to the staff report. So some data that we as staff had narrowed down, that we think would help you, help you make those decisions. So that was. We all worked on that, but I was not the staff lead. I'd be happy to try and answer questions if, if anyone has had. Um, more time to think about that or look at that. But this is a mix of stuff I've talked about, right? So the first couple of things are. Provided by HUD and their indices, kind of like what I showed you. Although not precisely, but looking at transportation and, and job access. And then a couple more, just like raw, um, raw data from the census. Housing burden is tabulated by the census. From individual surveys, looking at what people are paying versus, um, their income. Tenure is, you know, renter versus owner, educational payment, and then a couple of more. Um, analytical, so we're looking at a change over time. In median rent. And then the, the qualitative questions that is more of research from staff, looking at. At history and thinking through the implications of what the change would be. So ultimately. You know, we've landed on a mix of, I think, all of the stuff I've talked about. You know, there is. There is a level of, of detail that. Is feasible for a rezoning staff report. But. I think we were thinking of the pros and cons of all these different types of data and, and how to get it and where to get it. And have, have come down to this list. If anyone had any questions on that, like I said, I'd be happy to. To try and answer them. Um, but that is the end of my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions about any of this that anyone had.
Does anyone have any questions? Well, well, we're waiting for it. I want to say, Ira, thank you so much for, um. For this presentation. It was insightful. Uh, it was helpful, especially, I have some questions, but I'm gonna open the floor first. Okay, then I'll go.
Chairperson privilege.
Yeah, try to be gracious and share the information with people in the time. Um. Thank you again. I think it was really wonderful, just everything, how you coordinated it and to know that the information is available. Um, and just the, the. The various areas that it shows. Uh, what I thought was very interesting was the comment about, um. Uh, food deserts in terms of low access, uh, and how we can, how we see that. I thought that was. That, that was like, um, an, an aha moment, I think for me. Um, some of the questions that I do have, um, go to. Oh, it's more so a comment, I think, first of all, in one of the slides you showed us quality of life or the, the measure for quality of life. What I found very interesting about that is. The definition that was given, because it was looking at it from, um, a criminal justice lens. As opposed to green space, activity, walkability, that I would think would be more in line with quality of life. That was eye-opening for me. I don't know if it was eye-opening for anyone else. Um. So that was one for me. Secondly, when we were talking about the fair housing. Well, I'll say it in terms of the Fair Housing Act and what that covers, uh. Because I just remember recently when we were talking about ADUs. The fair housing component does not apply to ADUs, am I, or am I misunderstanding? Is that correct?
I think. I mean, what, what do you mean the fair housing?
So basically, when you're talking about fair housing, as you were saying, how you could not discriminate on any basis. Covered by fair housing, but I just wanted to be clear. I think this was, that was one of the components that. When we're talking about ADUs, accessory dwelling is for, for people who are not familiar with the, with the acronym. Fair Housing or the Act to, to bar discrimination does not apply.
Um, no, I think it would apply to any. Um, any housing of any type.
Does? I thought that was one of the things that they could not, they could not impose that in terms of backyard granny flats, that kind of.
Um, so if you. If you're renting an ADU and are a landlord, I mean, you're subject to fair housing law. No matter what the type of unit you're renting is. So if you. So the, the fair housing analysis. Gets at. You know, trying to look at discrimination a couple of different ways. One is, is broad-based demographic trends. Um, looking at like big picture where, where different. People live and, and comparing them to, you know, the categories that are protected from, under their federal law. Also looks at. Local regulations. Of the, the jurisdictions that administer. Um, housing funds, so like, looks at the zoning code, looks at the policies of the housing authorities. You know, there are a couple of things in, in city Raleigh zoning ordinance that are not. Word of fair housing, I think some, a lot of people would say. And also looks at complaints filed to HUD or the local entity that handles those, which in this case would be legal aid, I think. So if like someone complains against a landlord and. Because, you know, he wouldn't let me put a ramp in. And you're required to allow a renter to, at their own expense, put a ramp in. Um, for access, and some people don't want to have their property changed that way, then you can file a complaint. Um, and that would apply to any rental unit. Whether it's an ADU or not.
Okay, well, thank you for clarifying that because I. Okay, I was under the impression it was the opposite when it was something on someone's own property as opposed to maybe in, um. Like a multi-unit structure or something like that. Okay, well then, that then also answers my, uh, follow-up question because there, there have been conversations. In, um, council, okay, Bynum, yeah.
I was just gonna say, I think it's a lot harder to regulate. On a, on a, on a single unit basis, right? That the, it, the regulation of that really is going to probably end up being complaint-based by tenants who feel discriminated against. Um, just because there's so, there's so few parties involved, whereas a multifamily unit is much more likely, you know, the, um. There're just so many more players involved.
Okay.
It would be more likely to come to light if there were an issue.
Yeah, but for, like, for, for example, if someone comes and has, you know. A family or single parent or something with some kids and wants to rent an ADU and the person says, I don't want kids in there, they're gonna wreck my ADU. You know, that's illegal.
It would just hurt him.
Well, yes, naturally, but also you don't know that happens unless that person. Number one, knows that it's illegal. And then after that. While tell someone that it happened. So, you know, it's definitely on a smaller scale. Much more pervasive. There, there is. Organizations that do testing, it's called, so you'll like have people who have a clear accent, so. From, um, not native-born. To call a landlord and see if something's available, then someone who doesn't, who sounds like me, call a landlord and see if it's available. Um, that is done relatively infrequently. It's not the. Cheapest thing in the world to do. You know, even looking at like a Craigslist ad that says. No families or whatever. If, if someone, if, if legal aid wanted to bother or spend the time, not bother, I would say, or have the resources to do that, like. That's illegal too. But like Bynum is saying, when it's all, when it's spread out among small-time landlords and individual units. Just the volume becomes much bigger. Um, so it is harder to track, but it doesn't make it less illegal.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Lightman. I saw your hand. Do you still have a comment or question?
Oh, yeah, I just, um, yeah, I, I think that that regulation is going to be very tough to monitor, just like, um, I think that. You know, one of the questions I had when we were proposing ADU that I didn't necessarily favor was the fact that we can't figure out the quality of the building either. So if, you know, landlords are neglecting the units, that's going to be tough as well. Um, but I do know that Airbnb and, and I think it's VRBO, that they also monitor that, kind of like that fair housing. So then they make sure that, you know, people aren't discriminating, but, um, yeah, overall, it's kind of a tough thing to monitor.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Bennett.
Thank you. And Ira, thanks again, um, for the information. It was good to see all the data sources and the different types of data. Uh, what I was thinking as you were going through how to look at, um, various issues. I guess through the rezoning lens. What's important to me, or I guess what strikes me is. The trend is important. It, it, it's important to. Not look at a moment in time, but the trend because. For example, if we're looking at housing burden or, you know, poverty. Even race and ethnicity as areas are gentrifying, if we look at a particular rezoning today. Those, the, the demographics may have changed to look like, oh, wow, this is a. Great area. The incomes are high, the education level is high. But if we look at the history of it, we may see that it has completely flipped. From what it was, you know, so, so while the demographics suggest that this might not be. An air, a priority. an air, a priority area, I guess, 10 years ago, maybe it was. And so then I guess the conversation is, is that good or bad? You know, I mean, if all the people who were there 10 years ago have left and there's a new group there and that group is thriving and doing well, I guess, from a tax revenue or, you know, quality of life for them, that's great. But where do the other people go? It might be harder, you know, to have that conversation and to look at that type of data. But I think if we're trying to look at it through our, what we can look at as a planning commission, that's kind of how we have to look at it. You know, I guess the other question to ask is when you see an area flipping, I guess, if, if you will, to what extent is it good? Is it good? You know, to what extent is it helping the legacy residents, I guess? Because of course you want to see property values increase. You want to see some of these things happen. But to what extent is it happening and benefiting the people that were there? And to what extent is it happening and pushing them out to another area to just move those demographics to some other area? I hope that makes sense.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Commissioner Lightman, did I see your hand again? Okay. Okay. Well, we are heading up to our hour. If there aren't any other questions. Okay. And so again, Ira, thank you so much. This is very helpful. And for the links that we can go back and look at it. And I hope that those are also, we'll begin to see those compiled as we're compiling equity information in our reports. So thank you for that. And also, I'm sorry, we have to do one more thing. We have to approve the minutes. We will send the minutes. Okay, I will entertain a motion. Okay, I begin the first of approving the minute, motion to approve. Is there a second?
Motion to approve.
Thank you so much. Motion to approve. Second, all in favor, raise your hand for aye. Okay, minutes are approved. So thank you for that. And before we go, I do want to say a happy birthday to the Shanita Easton. Thank you. Happy birthday. I'm loving the tiara. All love it. Yes. So I hope you have a wonderful birthday. Would you like to say?
Just thank you. I appreciate it. It was your idea, so I found one. The kids did so. But thank you. I appreciate it.
You are very welcome. And it is also the birthday of our fellow Commissioner, Michelle McIntosh. So wishing her a happy birthday in her absence. So everyone, thank you for coming today. For all the viewers that will be watching this, hope the information has been helpful. Ira, thank you again for providing the information. Bynum, thank you for bringing clarity. David, thank you for your presence. And I hope you all have a wonderful day. Thank you.